Seventeenth, approximately one o'clock. This is the regular meeting of the Rancho Mirage City Council and Community Services District, Energy Authority, Housing Authority, Joint Powers Finance Authority, Library and Observatory, and Redevelopment Successor Agency Boards. I will ask if you will join me in the flag salute, please. Place your hand over your heart and repeat, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Downs?
I'm here.
Councilmember Fromberg-Ettlestein?
Here.
Councilmember O'Keefe?
Here.
Mayor Protem Molado?
Here.
Mayor Wile?
I am here. The first order of business today is a presentation that gives me a great deal of personal pleasure, and it's the recognition of the Hero and You Foundation, which has been headed for a number of years by Rick and Bunny Benaron, good friends in addition to being incredible philanthropists. Rick and Bunny, would you kindly meet me in the front of the room? It feels like old homewake with you two guys. This really gives me a great deal of pleasure presenting this to both of you, and it's a proclamation honoring the Hero and You Foundation. Whereas the Hero and You Foundation, founded in 2014 by Bunny and Rick Benaron, is committed to empowering, educating, and inspiring children and families with the tools to make better decisions during emergencies, ensuring their safety and well-being. The Foundation's mission includes providing essential socio-emotional health and safety education to children across the globe, equipping them with the critical skills needed to stay safe in the face of emergencies such as natural disasters and dangerous situations. The Foundation developed the Rocket Rules for Safety Program, designed to teach essential socio-emotional health and safety skills to children, helping them stay safe in calm and challenging situations. I'll digress for a minute here. If any of you have ever seen the rocket in person, and I had the privilege a number of years ago of watching at the Children's Museum, how hypnotized the kids were to see the rocket in action. And not only that, to see the inhibitions of the children immediately removed, and the confidence that they felt in giving themselves to this animated character, the trust, it was phenomenal, and it just impressed me so much. And let me just continue a couple of whereses. The Foundation has provided invaluable resources to over 250,000 families, teachers, and children through free educational toolkits. The Foundation has shown its commitment by installing 30 Dalmatian puppy sculptures across the United States, and the Foundation's unwavering commitment to helping children and families has earned numerous awards and accolades. Now therefore, it be resolved that I Ted Wile, Mayor of the City of Rancho Mirage, on behalf of the entire city council, do honor the Hero and You Foundation to Rick and Bunny Benaron.
(applause) Let me say this, a typical wife-giving direction.
Much easier to just take it and go on.
Well, thank you so much to every city council member, to everyone here in the city of Rancho Mirage who works tirelessly to keep this city safe, and we have one of the best cities, I think, in the whole nation. We are trying so hard to keep kids safe in this area and all over the nation, and the way we do that, and what Ted was saying, is that we have an animated program where the children actually talk to a live dog while they're in the classroom, and the dog is actually interacting with the children. So the children are getting taught by a little animated dog, and it is a very unique program, but it also brings out the best in the kids and also lets them give their emotions out to the teachers and lets them know what they're feeling. So not only do we have an emergency preparedness program, but we also have a social-emotional program where we're teaching kids how to manage their feelings. So we do bullying programs also. But emergency preparedness is where we started with the city, all about earthquake safety and an update for everybody. We are also just been asked by Shake Alert to make another program for them, for little children up through 11 years old, so we're working on that right now. And we just also finished a cybersecurity program for little kids, so again, all the way through elementary school. So we're very proud of that program that's being used in the Los Angeles School District right now, and we'll come right back down here to Rancho Mirage. And we did just start, we just finished 10 schools in the Palm Springs Unified School District, including Rancho Mirage Elementary School. So we're very proud of all of that, but most of all, proud of working with all of you who have supported us over all of these years. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Rick and Bunny. You're wonderful contributors to the city of Rancho Mirage as well as residents here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to say a few words?
Yes.
I just wanted to give you somewhat of a background of Bunny. Bunny, I met Bunny through a friend of hers who decided one night to invite Bunny over, and that was a big mistake she made.[516.38][516.38](laughter) So we got married, and then I found out a few things about Bunny. I was reading her early elementary school report cards, and although she always got A's through everything, there was always notes on it about she was the one that helped everybody in the class. And she went on to become a teacher, and she was a teacher for a number of years in a very difficult area. And then she decided, because I needed help in my business, I needed a dedicated computer operator. And in those days, the computers were about half the size of this area here, and Bunny came in and learned how to operate it. And you know, as you go through business, and we're in business for 45 years, sometimes there's good times and sometimes there's difficult times, and this was a difficult time. And so she was operating the computer for about six months, and then all of a sudden these two guys come in with trolleys and they take the computer away because I couldn't pay for it. So what did Bunny do? She went into the warehouse and started to make boxes and put merchandise in boxes and ship boxes, and that's the way her life has been. And then she became the number-one salesperson in our operation. She handled accounts like Walmart and J.C. Penney, and she flew all over the country taking midnight flights, and they absolutely loved her. And about 20 years later, 10 years, 12 years ago, we sold our business, and particularly Bunny, wanted to give back to the community, and through our success, we're able to form the Hero and You Foundation and do our best for young children, and that's Bunny.
Thank you, Bunny. Great story. And now to continue another great story, and we have a presentation for the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission, and I'll ask Michael O'Keefe if he would handle that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations Bunny and Rick. It was well-deserved, and thank you for all that you do. Recently, I was able to spend the day at the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission, and like most of you, I knew that the mission helped a lot of people, but seeing the facilities up in person and meeting with the staff and the clients and learning about the programs really made it a more urgent thing for me, and made it more real. And folks, this is as real as it gets. You know, since 1971, the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission has been an oasis, a place of refuge for the homeless and the neediest in our valley. It is a safe haven, a place of rest for the weary, and a place where daily needs can be met. So over the years, the mission has continued to meet the ever-growing needs of individuals who, you know, for a variety of reasons, have found themselves without the basic necessities of life. They may have lost a job, they may have lost a home, or had a major health emergency, they may have experienced emotional, mental, physical substance abuse, but they have a dedicated staff and volunteers there that serve more than 340,000 meals a year. They provide shelter to thousands of people, some with young children, and they also provide food, clothing, counseling, and hygiene products. Their belief is that no one should face homelessness alone. So the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission offers more than just a place to stay, they offer hope and dignity and a path to independence. So I had the honor to meet Darla Burkett, the extraordinary executive director who has just announced her retirement, and she will be sorely missed. And I worked with Scott Wolf, the Development Director who does so much at the mission. But I was really lucky to meet Kristin Pavia. She's the Business Development Coordinator. She spent too much time with me, I really appreciated it, and I've asked Kristin to come here today and to let all of you know what's going on at the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission. So Kristin, if you could come forward, please.
Good morning, good afternoon, sorry. So I'm here. Put that right there, thank you. So thank you, Michael, for introducing me, and I appreciate you guys welcoming me here today. Just to talk a little bit about the mission, we are currently going to be opening up our new Women's and Children's Center that is going to be opening up on April 29th, so we're encouraging everybody to attend. Our ribbon cutting will be at 8:00 a.m. We offer two programs, we also, for gateway vocational programs, which provides job readiness, food shelter, case management, and support services, and that's a six-to-nine-month program. And then we also have our New Life Program, which is a faith-based residential program, and that is nine to 12 months, and that is also, it's just faith-based for residential program, offering shelter, counseling, and life skills to break the cycles. We have an 85% success rate and a 1% return rate, so we do pretty well for ourselves. We also, like I said, we have volunteer opportunities, referral services, full wraparound services, rapid rehousing for just, not just for our residents, but also for anybody that's residing in Riverside County that might need help with shelter. So I'm going to show you a short video, it's about five minutes, it's a pretty much, it's a good overall view of our mission, and hopefully you guys will like it. If you have any questions, please ask me after the video. Thank you.
Coachella Valley Rescue Mission started over 50 years ago and has grown over the years into the Coachella Valley's largest homeless shelter. We provide a safe place where people can rebuild and renew to find their way back from hopelessness to a life of self-sufficiency. Currently, CVRM has 250 beds. We are at full capacity in all of our programs, providing not only meals and shelter, but a full-service approach to ending homelessness one person at a time. We're excited to have you with us today and share a little bit more about who we are and who we serve and the miracles that happen here every day.
The first place our clients visit when they arrive is our emergency shelter. We welcome our clients into our shelter directly from the streets, and we start to greet their needs immediately. We provide showers, clothing, meals, a bed to sleep in, and we start to case manage them from the first day that they are here. Our goal in the shelter is to prepare them for long-term programs, housing options, or referrals to outside agencies for further care.
We meet the needs where it's most important, on the streets of Coachella Valley. Every day, we encounter people who are in the greatest need of comfort and assistance. We provide a helping hand with food and water, clothing, showers, and toiletries, and most importantly, we always offer a ride back to the mission for further services.
The Rescue Mission offers two programs for those that need it more than just shelter. Our Gateway and New Life programs are designed to provide the skills and tools needed to transition into independent living. We have life skill classes, job skill training, counseling and support groups, as well as assistance with finding housing. We take a personal approach with every client as an individual with a unique set of goals and victories to achieve.
With homelessness among women and single moms growing so quickly, I'm grateful that we offer a safe place for them to heal and restore. CVRM has shelters for both the Gateway and New Life programs, as well as our family shelter for our moms with kids. The programs here at CVRM give the women an opportunity to take part in a personalized plan for them to work on themselves as people and to get the tools that they need to get back out into independent living. Our client moms have an excellent support system around them, so they can concentrate on making family unity a priority as they move forward.
Our Housing Department is an important part of how we provide every opportunity for client success. Making sure that clients have a home when they graduate is very important to the program here at the mission. The housing staff works with each client to make sure that if they need help with finding housing, we are here to assist them. Transitioning to independent living is one of the final steps in completing our program, and it's so rewarding to see our clients achieve that success.
Our kitchen is a vital part of the care we provide for our clients every day, ensuring everyone gets proper nutrition and has access to three meals daily, goes a long way in making the path to restoration easier. The clients we serve are precious to us, and we know that a healthy body is essential with restoring the whole person. We serve over 300,000 meals a year at the mission, and we also operate mission catering. The catering program here provides work experience for our clients to work in the hospitality industry, and we are one of the best catering companies in the valley.
The New Life Retail Boutique is a great place to buy gently-used items at a great price. For over 15 years, the boutique has been a fixture in the community, serving the public and CVRM clients alike. We train clients to work in the retail industry as part of their program, working with them to develop skills that they can use to obtain employment here in the valley.
For over five decades, the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission has cared for the most vulnerable people in our community. Those who come through our doors are broken, addicted, hungry, and most times without any hope of finding help. We serve them with love, respect, dignity, and compassion, sharing with them the joy of God and the hope of a newfound independence. I want to thank you all for your friendship and support of assisting us with everything we do at the Rescue Mission for helping those in need the very most.
I don't know if most people know that right out here in our lobby, we have a donation box for Coachella Valley Rescue Mission right here at City Hall. And would you like to tell folks here what you're looking for right now? I know that socks and shoes and diapers are always in demand.
Right, right. Right now, what we're looking for is for bedding for our new Women's and Children's facility. I didn't mention earlier, but that's going to be an additional 60 beds on top of the 270 beds that we have now, so that is a great need, is bedding and blankets, pillows, whatnot for our Women's and Children's facility.
Any questions with anyone?
What size bedding do you need?
Full and twin.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Do you need children's clothes and toys, too?
Always. Thank you, guys.
I don't have any questions, but I think it's important to note that the city is a contributor through our Special Assistance Fund program to the mission, so.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for your time, appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.[1300.03][1300.03](applause) Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. That concludes the presentations, and we now will go to non-agenda public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to speak on issues not on the agenda, for a maximum of three minutes per speaker. Should you approach the three-minute mark, I will advise you to kindly conclude your comments. May we have the first speaker, please?
Of course. The first speaker is Julie Oliff.
Hello, Mayor Wile, Mayor Protem Molado, councilmembers, city staff, and guests here today with a very special call-out to the emergency services in the back that I spotted. Thank you. My name is Julie Oliff, and I am terrified of public speaking, but thank you for having me here. I'm also the general manager of a beautiful little spot called Sensei Porcupine Creek down the road, and I have the great pleasure of serving as the Chair of the Board for the Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce and our fearless CEO who keeps us in line or does her best to, because we're a little out of control. But the Chamber of Commerce is deeply focused right now on being a trusted leader for this community and for the businesses amongst it and for our members, and putting together a strong program of work to really ensure that we remain a dynamic and steady and reliable resource to our community. And speaking of bodies of work, I know that a few of you were able to attend yesterday's luncheon, but it was a signature speaker series where we were lucky to welcome the U.S. Chamber from D.C., and they presented on artificial intelligence. It was educational, it was eye-opening, and just a little bit scary, but not all about Terminator Two, at my great disappointment. Later this month, the Chamber is going to celebrate a meet-and-greet mixer at Catalan, just across the way. If you haven't tried it, their octopus is to die for. It is under new ownership, and we'll also be holding a Young Professionals Network event. In other news, at Sensei Porcupine Creek, I'm actually here to thank you on behalf of the 165 souls that I have the great honor of serving. We are about to open our new operations buildings, and we've existed for the last three years trying to provide a life-changing experience for every guest and team member that came through our doors, and we've done so under the auspices of it being a private estate. But now at these buildings, my team is going to have a real cafeteria, real locker rooms, real showers, and the space that I deeply feel they deserve, and that's with many thanks to the planning and permissions that we were able to get from the city. So we are so grateful for your partnership, and from a very deep human level, thank you from my team. We could not be more appreciative for the ability to have a job in this beautiful city, but also to be able to work in that environment will be truly life-changing. One quick happy note, as someone who did survive the hospitality business in the Great Recession, as well as COVID, I'm always really super happy to have a job, but I'm especially happy right now because this year, more so than last year, our business is truly booming, and we've been able to welcome twice as many guests year over year, and go from, you know, four buyouts to eight. So my team also gets to stay employed, and we're all just deeply grateful to be in this vibrant business community and to keep doing the jobs that we truly love and enjoy doing. So thank you very, very much. We appreciate you very much. Thank you.[1518.01][1518.01](applause)
Thank you, Julie. I think all of us have expressed the relationship that we have with the Chamber, and indeed, I think, we all express the fact that it's a partnership that we covet very much, we hold it very dear. We know the contribution that the Chamber makes for the benefit of small business throughout the valley and throughout Rancho Mirage. It's just a blessing to have you people here, and we appreciate all the effort. Thank you so very, very much.
The next speaker is Susan Ragsdale.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Susan Ragsdale. I am a peace-loving, innocent 73-year-old. In 2018, I moved into so-called Fair Housing Rancho Mirage City Apartment, where I was continually victimized by mentally ill tenants for four years. My apartment was sandwiched between two sets of predatory bullies. For amusement, they targeted me in an out-of-control hostile living environment. The Rancho Mirage Housing Authority, including Mayor Ted Wile, the city council members, and most especially Isaiah Hagerman, the city manager, this is his heinous crime. The Rancho Mirage Housing Authority fostered long-term vulgar misogynist harassment, breaching their duty of care. They trashed me, me. Furthermore, these Rancho Mirage, quote, "civil servants" ruthlessly victimized me because they erroneously assumed I protested real estate development. I had nothing to do with this, but they scapegoated me. These public officials are guilty of sadistic, sadistic, intentional elder abuse, life-threatening defamation, gross negligence, and city, quote, "fair housing fraud." My meager retirement was 1,700 Social Security monthly plus affordable housing. For whistleblowing a hostile living environment, the self-serving malicious property manager Sonia Cabrera framed me in order to conveniently evict the victim. Ultimately, I was made homeless, living in my car, by this crime. Cabrera evicted me from city housing based on 14 false allegations of harassment served upon me during a two-and-a-half-year period. The Housing Authority never gave me a chance to testify in my own self-defense. According to the Fair Housing Act, this is illegal. The Housing Authority subjected me to a sham eviction predicament. I was, it was traumatic and unmanageable. I had no idea how to save my life. As a victim in court, I became emotionally disabled and was unable to promptly testify on my own behalf. The Housing Authority had switched judges. That is the worst thing. You know, they say my eviction was, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time, but they switched judges from the expert on unlawful detainers to an unsympathetic novice judge who quickly rubber-stamped my eviction. You've seen the pictures, and I don't know why you don't restore me to what is rightfully mine. You swindled me, and you ruined my life completely.
Wally Melendez?
Administration, I wish that one day, somebody will, when saying the Pledge of Allegiance, to say a pledge allegiance to the flag of the United, to the flag and to the U.S. Constitution of the United States of America. So I wish somebody would do that. So, so right now, DC, the federal government, the billionaires have the upper hand in running the federal government. Mr. Elon Musk, the great brain that shoots up rockets and wants to colonize Mars, is stealing a lot of our personal data wherever he can. And this guy, Musk, is a good friend of Putin, the dictator of Russia, that has his population enslaved, like real slaves, people, and throws them into the meat grinder to attack Ukraine because he wants Ukraine, because he says that he owns Ukraine. Just think about that. And our president is also a good buddy of Mr. Putin. So I have a very few seconds, but I want to reiterate about the, and believe it or not, I got this idea from what they do in Russia, about the equity participatory agreement versus the rental agreement. And this girl here, you know, or this lady here have the program, you know, to help the homeless people. But I have news for you. The homeless people will remain homeless people, because the little money they have, if they are happy, lucky enough to get a little apartment, is going down the drain instead of getting equity from that little money that they have. Because, you know, you can't just throw people into a building and give them food and a shower and say, oh, now you, now you're
Please conclude your comments.
Coming up. But they need equity in the places that they live.
Brad Anderson?
Good morning, good afternoon. My name is Brad Anderson. I currently live in the city of Rancho Mirage. I just want to take this opportunity just to address a few items. I did, I'm talking about, I did submit some written comments. Hopefully, they're on the record, and people can take a look at those if they can find them. I'm just, I'm becoming disfranchised of the operations of this city. Really, the only thing I talk about or fight for is things that have been taken away over the past few years, and one of them being an open and free election for us residents to vote for our elected council members, but we don't get to do that anymore either. So hopefully, things will change, but I don't see it, but I just want to tell you, I'm one of many disfranchised people. Don't even watch the meetings anymore in my neighborhood, the people I talk to, because it's more a self-gratitude-type attitude. And I don't mean to come down on you, especially your first presentation. We have a special interest that works throughout the city that infects, infects probably is not the right word, but affects my livelihood and my enjoyment of my property, having one of the vendors that lives next door, and that's been going on for a number of years. But so I think the only way to change that is to actually have an elected councillor that represents everybody that lives in this city, and people vote for those people. And I think that's the only way out of this right now at this point, but I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
That was the last speaker card. Is there anyone else who would like to provide comments on something not on today's agenda? That was the last speaker.
Thank you. That concludes the non-agenda public comments. We will now go into council member comments.
Mr. Mayor, there is a request for a public comment on city council member comments. So if you would like, we can take that now.
Sure.
Brad Anderson?
Hello again, Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage. I did write some comments for this item, too, but again, I'm at a disadvantage, because there's no staff reports of any of the comments, and even if you show a video, there's nothing that I can say before that. I would have to see it. So I have nothing further to say if you don't allow me to speak after your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? That was the only speaker.
Okay. Again, that will conclude the non-agenda public comments. I will now ask for council member comments, and I'll start on my right with Council Member Downs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. I do have a couple of items I would like to speak to today. First is about an article that appeared in the Desert Sun regarding the lease of Desert Regional Hospital to Tenant Healthcare. Now, the Desert Healthcare District owns the hospital but doesn't have the ability to operate the hospital, so it leases the hospital to tenant, which is a huge publicly traded operator of hospitals around the country. And here on the screen is the title of the article. You can find it in the Desert Sun online archives if you'd like to read the full article. Now, the original lease for the hospital was signed back in 1997, and it is due to expire in 2027. The new lease, the new 30-year lease, was approved by a ballot measure in November of 2024. So why is this an issue today since that new lease was approved by the voters of the district in 2024? Well, here's the reason. The Desert Healthcare District has filed what is called a validation action with Riverside County Superior Court, and the validation action asks the judge to validate the lease. Now, the purpose is to cut off potential future legal action challenging the validity of the lease. Now, this lease contains a non-compete clause, and that non-compete clause was the single most debated issue during the voting on this lease last year. The non-compete clause is aimed at a single institution, Eisenhower Health. Now, the non-compete is included in the lease because tenant did not want any grant revenues flowing from the Desert Healthcare District to a hospital that tenant views as competition to its operation of Desert Regional Hospital. And here's the issue. The district makes grants to a wide range of organizations providing healthcare services to district residents. Now, this is a big district. It stretches from north of Desert Hot Springs down to the Salt and Sea. It covers some 457 square miles and about 400,000 residents. Now, this is almost as big as a couple of states. There are 540,000 residents in Wyoming and 640,000 in Vermont. So this gives you some scope for the size of this district, and the Desert Healthcare District mission statement is, and I quote, "to achieve optimal health care at all stages of life for all district residents." Now, it's not possible for Desert Regional Hospital to provide health services to such a huge geography and population without help from many healthcare providers who receive grants from the district. That's one of the reasons that the district makes grants to a wide range of healthcare providers throughout the district. But based on this non-compete provision, no grants to Eisenhower, because it competes with Desert Regional Hospital operated by tenant in a small area of this sprawling district. I say a small area, because these two hospitals are separated by 13 miles, 13 miles in a 457-square-mile district. Now, Eisenhower is probably the best choice for a wide variety of medical services for residents in this far-flung district, and there is no funding from the district for any part of Eisenhower based on this ill-advised, non-compete provision. Now, funding for the district grants comes from the lease payments made by tenant to operate the hospital, but funding also comes largely from property tax dollars. Most district residents, you and me, we pay a portion of our property tax dollars to support this district in its mission. Now, this non-compete means that your public tax dollars are restricted in the way those dollars are spent for public health in this district, restricted by a Texas-based company, Tenant Healthcare. I ask you to consider, does this make sense? Does this seem fair that your tax dollars collected to provide grant funding for public health in this district are restricted? Does it seem fair that this restricted is aimed at a single entity, Eisenhower Health, an organization most able to provide healthcare services to district residents? Does it seem fair that a public company based in Texas wants to restrict the way that your tax dollars are spent? Now, it might seem fair to some folks, but it doesn't seem fair to me, and I don't think it probably makes sense to many of you. So it seems to me that the Desert Healthcare District might consider changing its mission statement from "to achieve optimal health at all stages of life for all district residents" to this, "to achieve optimal health at all stages of life for all district residents, except when that optimal health is provided by Eisenhower." So what is Eisenhower doing? Eisenhower did not file legal action against the Desert Healthcare District. Eisenhower is merely responding to the district's validation action with Riverside County Superior Court. Eisenhower is talking to the court and asking them to refuse to validate the lease, in particular, the non-compete provision, for an important reason. This provision prohibits the district, a public entity, from awarding the grant of taxpayer-derived funds to an important local healthcare nonprofit. Eisenhower, essentially one publicly-funded charity, the district, is prohibited from awarding publicly-generated funds to yet another charitable nonprofit hospital, a hospital that clearly has the ability to provide optimal health care to all, at all stages of life for residents of this district. Now, here's what I propose we do as a result. I ask the city clerk to include an item in our next council meeting agenda, the subject of the item to be consideration of passing a resolution of support for Eisenhower's challenge to the district's validation action, that the agenda item also contain a provision that if approved, a copy of the resolution be provided to the CEO of Eisenhower Health and the chairperson of the Desert Healthcare District. So would the city clerk please work with the city attorney to develop an agenda item and also propose a resolution for discussion at the next council meeting? Now, the second issue that I want to talk today is an issue that may have impact on the city collection of tax revenues. So I am the city's representative on Visit Greater Palm Springs. VGPS is the organization in this desert that encourages travel, and travel is extremely important to this desert. It's our biggest industry. So there was an agenda item at the last VPS Board and Executive Committee meeting. It was a presentation by the executive director of Visit Greater Palm Springs, and it included this graph. Let's put the graph up. It's a graph that shows the intent of Canadian residents to travel to the U.S. So I'll tell you a little bit about what this graph means. The top line on the graph, at the end of the graph, on my right side, your left-hand side, the blue line shows a drop of 16%. What does that mean? It means that over just the last couple of months, Canadian residents have dropped their interest in travel to the United States of America by 16%. And the lower graph shows that, the blue line on the lower graph, shows that in the state of California, it's dropped, we're in good shape. It's only dropped by 15% in the state of California. Now, this is important, because we are beginning our two-year budget cycle. We'll be projecting revenues and expenses over the next two years, and a little over 30% of the city's revenues comes from transient occupancy taxes from our hotels, a little over 20% from sales taxes. Now, it's a good bet that these stats for Canada are pretty similar to other countries. So it could have an impact on our transient occupancy tax and sales tax revenues by a few percentage points. Now, that doesn't sound like much, but about 3% of, say, around a $35 million annual revenue budget is more than $1 million. Now, our special assistance funds, we just had a presentation from the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission, in our special assistance funds, we provide revenues to the CVRM. Now, our special assistance fund program is about $120,000 a year. Our annual contribution to the Catalan is about $50,000. Our annual support to our Chamber of Commerce is about $150,000 annually. Now, if our revenues drop by 3%, how many of these programs and others will be impacted? And we just received a recent message from the president and CEO of VGPS. Consumer sentiment studies show that since September of 2024, the percent of travelers who say politics will greatly influence their travel decisions jumped from 24% to 42%. So as of today, there's no way to measure how our city revenues will be impacted by this administration's policies. And my purpose is not to argue the politics of the administration's approach to tariffs or other issues with respect to our allies. My purpose is simply to make sure that Rancho Mirage residents know how the administration's policies might have a direct effect on Rancho Mirage revenues. Now, two thoughts that I'll end with today. First is, last weekend, Desert Theatricals presented a Broadway Under the Stars production of, at the Rancho Mirage Amphitheater, is a terrific production of a Broadway musical, Hairspray. The lead character, Tracy, had a great line of dialogue that I think has some bearing on the two issues that I spoke to today. It's after she has some legal difficulties and prior to her ultimate win at the end of the play, and it's after she is railroaded, I guess, by a couple of her, she thought, friends in a contest. And what Tracy said, as I said, I think applies to both of my comments here today. Her line at the end of the movie is, manipulating our judicial system just to win a contest is un-American. And the last thought that I have for you today is, I don't know which direction the economy will take. I don't have a crystal ball, no one does, but the indications at this point of time caution us and point to potentially some pain. What I do know is this, my city council colleagues and I will do that which this council has done for decades. We will responsibly and intelligently shepherd this city's revenues and expenses and its financial condition, regardless of the direction that this economy takes. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you, Steve. That was certainly an in-depth discussion on several subjects. As it relates to the Healthcare District, I've always maintained that the non-compete, frankly, you know, touches on the restraint of trade issue, and to me, that's what has been so vital in providing health services for our area here. Any restraint is a detriment to our area.
I think so, too.
So I appreciate your comments. Next comment by Mayor Protem Molado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no comments on issues, but I do want to wish our residents, those that celebrated Passover last weekend and those that are celebrating Easter, I wish you a very peaceful, enjoyable holiday season with your family. That's it for me today.
Oh, thank you for both. And welcome back. May I welcome Eve Fromberg Edelstein? Do you have any thoughts today?
No comments today, Mayor.
All right. Welcome. Councilmember O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of items. First, I'm excited to tell you about our Earth Day celebration next Tuesday, April 20th, the 2nd. It's a free, family-friendly event with hands-on activities and sustainable information right here in Rancho Mirage. We're going to start the day bright and early on with a Walk the Washes Nature Stroll, where we will clean up the washes at Rancho Mirage Community Park. That starts at 7:00 in the morning next Tuesday. This is going to be a wonderful way to get out. Weather is good and nature while helping keep our community beautiful and litter-free. Then at 9:00 until noon, we will have a celebration at the Rancho Mirage Library. It's going to be filled with a lot of different activities for all different age groups. We will have free document shredding, e-waste disposal, donation for drop-offs on gently-used items. We will have recycled art created by local artists. We will have interactive stations where you can make your own eco-friendly laundry detergent. You can build a bird feeder. You can create recycled crafts, and you can plant pepper seeds and other plants. We're also going to have local microgreen and date farmers there telling you how to grow your own food. grow your own food. And if you are kids under 10, you're going to receive free tickets to the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert, and we will be raffling off some great prizes throughout the day, including tickets to the Living Desert, the escape room passes, and a lot of different gift cards. All the recycling and donation services are open to the public. There are no residential restrictions. If you are going to drop off something for recycling, just drive through the gravel area there at the library before you park and come in to enjoy the festivities. So we can celebrate Earth Day together, which is one of my pet projects, so I hope you'll join all of us and have a good time. The second item I'd like to talk to today about is, we were talking about protecting the environment with the Earth Day, but this is about protecting our residents. Currently, the city of Ranch Mirage is served by two fire stations. And someday soon, in the not-too-distant future, we will add another fire station. But in the meantime, Fire Station 50 is located on the south end of the city along Highway 111, right next to Thunderbird Country Club. Fire Station 69 is centrally located on Gerald Ford Drive, right next to the Children's Discovery Museum. Each firehouse has an ambulance. Medic 50 is at Station 50, and Medic 69 is at Station 69, and it's all part of the city's emergency medical services. A third unit, Medic 269, serves as a reserve ambulance. So maybe you saw it on the news, I'm happy to announce that very soon the city will welcome a new ambulance, Medic 52, which will also be stationed at Fire Station 69. So with this additional ambulance, Ranch Mirage will have three active ambulances in service and one in reserve. We've already hired additional personnel, and Medic 52 is expected to go into service within the next few months, once it's fully equipped and upboarded. So we're excited to expand this emergency medical services. It enhances our ability to respond quickly and effectively to residents and to neighbors. This investment in public safety reflects the city's ongoing commitment to keeping Ranch Mirage safe. We are responsive and well-prepared. And remember this, as a Ranch Mirage resident, you are protected from any out-of-pocket costs related to emergency paramedic or ambulance transportation services. We live in a great city, and we have a short video for you to see.
As the Coachella Valley's population continues to grow, Fire Station 69 in the city of Ranch Mirage is expanding its resources to meet the rising demand for safety services.
The reason why we're doing this, we're seeing an increase of calls for service within the city of Ranch Mirage.
Battalion Chief Matthew Coats says this station is adding a new ambulance and has already added new staff to operate it. Adding these upgrades improved public safety by ensuring faster response times in critical situations.
We could provide our advanced life support measures. We can handle more calls than we used to by having an additional ambulance within the city.
Firefighter Paramedic Ashley Kosky says the additional equipment and personnel could prove to be lifesaving in emergencies.
As a paramedic, when we come on scene, we have a larger scope of practice where we're able to care to specifically critical patients, where we can provide those services to them early.
The new ambulance is being built in Houston, Texas, with plans to have it in service later this year. First responders say these additions will improve public safety as our community continues to grow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Michael. We are fortunate, I might tag on to that, that as the video said, and as Michael referenced, there is no charge to our residents when there is an ambulance service called to their home. What they ask for, if there's any insurance that can reimburse part or all of it that is collected, but if there is none, there is no charge. You know, years ago, it used to be, the joke was that, God forbid if something happened to you and you were in Cathedral City, drag the body across the line into Ranch Mirage, call an ambulance, and then go to the hospital. That may or may no longer be the case today, but we're very fortunate, and it's a great service. So thank you, Chief. Thank you for being here today, and we appreciate the service. I will tag on one last thing, and one of the wonderful assets that we have in Ranch Mirage is the Annenberg Estate called Sunnylands. The Annenberg Trust was founded in 1966 by Ambassador Walter Annenberg and his wife. It is a fabulous place to visit. The gardens are open to everyone. There is no charge. There is a coffee shop restaurant available to the public. There is a fee if you want to take a tour of the house and the grounds, about an hour and a half trip. Most memorable, this is a facility that has housed, frankly, the kings, queens, and generals of the world. So with that, I'd like a video showing Sunnylands, please.
We're talking about the college internship program. A large part of the Annenberg history is, and their legacy, is education. So we have created a model here where we use college interns instead of docents to interpret the story of the Annenberg's and things that happen at Sunnylands. Each year, we recruit a new guide class that comes in. They spend a month with us training, and then they are the ones that are running the front desk when you arrive.
Yes, sir, minutes availability.
And they're the ones taking people onto the property to interpret the history.
I'd like to say that there's something for everyone on the tour.
The benefits of this program is, not only do they get paid, they get college credit, and we schedule around their classes. So our priority is college first and then Sunnylands second.
As a college student, since I'm studying art history with the Annenberg's collection of artwork here at Sunnylands, it's really pushed me forward in my studies.
Every day is completely different. You get to meet different people from all over the world.
People should consider being a tour guide because it can help you improve your public speaking. It can help you get more comfortable with other jobs.
The requirements are that you are enrolled in a trade, college, or university in September when the program starts, and that you're available in the month of August to train. If you're interested in applying, you can find the links at sunnylands.org. So what we've seen with this program is that guides come in shy, uncomfortable with the information, not really sure what's going to happen. When they leave, they have developed skills that even some of the colleges report back to us, they're different students.
If you're thinking about becoming a tour guide, I think you absolutely should do it. There are so many different elements to this job that really benefits anyone from any walk of life.
For those thinking about applying, I highly recommend. You get to make new friends and learn new skills and develop those skills into something that will help you in the future.
To work with all the different areas that Sunnylands has, I think it's a unique opportunity for our students in our desert.
That is just so great. Again, we're also very proud of another wonderful asset that's domiciled here in the city of Ranch Mirage. That concludes our council comments, and I will now ask the city manager for any comments. If he has none, he can then go directly into the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No comments today, so we'll go right to the consent calendar. The council has three items on the consent calendar for consideration. Item 6A is the approval of the April 3, 2025, regular meeting minutes. Staff is proposing an amendment to those minutes to reflect that public comment was provided for Agenda Item Number Four, which was council board member comments. So if, when the council makes a motion, if they could include that amendment for the minutes, that would be appreciated. Item 6B are the approval of the contracts. Item 6C are demands. Before we go to council comments or questions, I'll ask the city clerk to take any public comment on the consent calendar.
Thank you again. Brad Anderson, currently living within the city. I wanted to speak on Item 6A, which is the regular city council meetings of April 3, and thank you for that one small amendment. And I wanted to speak on Item 6C, Demands, too, briefly. I did write some comments concerning these items that I'm speaking on. I may have even added contracts into my, I don't remember, but I know for minutes for sure, I did bring up some issues that were incorrect, and I just want to emphasize again, that public comment, everything I'm saying here, you did amend that, so my stance on, or my position on any of the items I'm speaking on would not be recorded. And that's because of the way you changed to the titled action minutes. And again, I did write some comments, so hopefully that will be more detailed, if you can understand my scribbling and how I write, but please take a look at those. Just briefly, my understanding is, in 2014, there was an embarrassing aspect to the Clerk's Association, the Association of Clerks, I believe it is. And so in 2015, they wrote this summary of how they want to do minutes in the future to take off the, in my opinion, to take off the pressure of them doing a correct job in the beginning. And this is where we are roughly 10 years later because of that. There is no set precedent to do what you're doing by censoring. Really, this is censoring the public. You steer our recording commissioner reports in a manner that you can understand them, but the public comments, we have a right to speak. There are government codes associated with that. It appears that there are going to have to be some legal action to change this, and that's shameful, because I don't want to spend my money on this, but I'm going to have to, I think, so just be on notice to that. And on Demands, too, I noticed there was a $40,000, $25,000 allotment for the block group, which is the automatic license plate readers that the city has. Apparently, that's some kind of administrative that could be associated with the contract that you approved at the previous meeting, but again, I don't know that for sure. I just think that type of allotment of spending should be really classified and maybe read aloud at these meetings, so people could know how resources are being spent and be as transparent as possible, and that's it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like, I'm sorry, is there anyone else who would like to speak on the consent calendar? That was the only speaker.
Are there any council comments regarding the consent calendar? If not, I will ask for a motion along with the amendment that's suggested by Isaiah.
So moved, including the proposed amendment.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
And the consent calendar is approved. We will now go into the action calendar, and the first item is the intention to annex territory comprising 5.05 acres to community facilities, District Number One. Jacob DeLa Cruz, financial analyst, if you would, Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, council. This item is the first step in the city's annexation process for developments within the city's jurisdiction. The second and final step is planned to be considered at the June 5 council meeting. The territory proposed for annexation is located approximately 2,000 feet south of Frank Sinatra Drive on the east side of Visita del Sol. The territory is approximately 5.05 acres, and the project is slated to subdivide into four single-family residential lots. Tentative parcel map 38899 was originally approved by the Planning Commission on September 26, 2024. Condition of approval number 14 for the project requires the territory be annexed into Community Facilities District Number One. In accordance with the condition of approval, the owner of the annexed territory submitted a petition for annexation requesting that the city council initiate proceedings to annex the territory into CFD1 and provide for expedited approval of the annexation and the levy of the special tax. Upon approval of the resolution, the city will be able to accept the petition submitted by the owner for annexation, consent to the levy upon the annexed territory, allow for the shortening of the time for the special election to expedite the annexation, accept and preliminarily approve the annexation map and direct the city clerk to record the map, and finally establish the date and time of the public hearing on the annexation of the territory. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jacob. Are there any public comments?
I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on Item 7A? No speakers.
Thank you. Are there any council comments regarding this item? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion regarding Item 7A.
I'll make the motion, that the council approve and adopt Resolution Number 2025, next in order declaring the city's intention to annex territory to Community Facilities District Number One and to levy a special tax therein for additional police and fire services. Preliminary approve. A map of the area proposed to be annexed and schedule a public hearing to consider the annexation and the levy of the special tax for annexation number 198.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Kindly vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
That approves Item 7A. We will now go to, the next item, 7B, is the annual appointment to city boards and commissions. Kristi Ramos, our city clerk, will handle that item.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and council members. As you know, the city annually seeks volunteers to serve on its boards and commissions. Beginning in February, the city clerk's office issued a notice inviting applications. The notice was published twice in the Desert Sun newspaper and included in several city e-blasts. It was also posted at City Hall, at the library, and on the city website. Applications received are on file in my office. Copies of all applications were promptly provided to the city council for review and consideration. Each council member provided me with their nominations, which shall be confirmed by a majority vote of the council. In a moment, I will read all nominations. You may make one motion to confirm the entire slate of appointments. Any nomination requiring further consideration may be pulled from the slate for separate action. Are there any questions before I read the slate of nominations? Okay. So for the Community Emergency Preparedness Commission nominees are Mitch Brown, Al Parso York, Ron Stillman, Tonya Hyams, Gary Jones, Technical Advisor Katie Stice, and Technical Advisor Mary Lou Suter. Community Parks and Trails Commission nominees are Leslie Malloy, Dennis Constant, Warren Schneider, Eric Wright, and Nathan Droukro. Historic Preservation Commission nominees are Carol Leibowitz, Frank Lopez, Christian Braun, Craig Trupain, Kurt Penn. Housing Commission nominees are Jennifer Currie, Isaiah Harris, Scott Newton, Lee Jennison, Jack Mauriter, and Linda Madison. Library and Observatory Advisory Commission nominees are Ron Treet, Don Stein, Dom Summa, Lois Reese, Guido Portante, and Technical Advisor Patrick Lambright. Library and Observatory Foundation Board nominees are Robert Moon, Lucy Tagmeyer, Christine Hughes, Leslie Usso, Eric Cunningham, Peter Samuels, James Soa, Gary Galton, and Mary Willis Yoshioka. Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission nominees are Marlene Casseta, Mike Renner, Diane Lynn, Kenneth Easely, and Stan Markowitz. Planning Commission nominees are Murray Bryant, David Gray, Austin Beal, Pamela Chanter, and Jason Agostini. Traffic Safety Commission nominees are Gary Farrell, Ken Ringold, Stephen Shuey, Peter Javier, Sheriff Sergeant Emile Stan, and COPS Captain Alfonso Carpenter. That completes the list of nominations. Any vacancies remaining may be considered at a future meeting, and I can take public comment if you would like.
Please do.
Good afternoon again, Brad Anderson. I wanted to speak on this item of the appointment of city boards and commissions. I'm just really concerned about the transparency of the operations of how the city selects these, and I know the last time I had to actually do a public records request to get the application or get the names. I asked for very little, and that's really all I wanted, was the name and the positions that they were applying for, and that's concerning, because we have recycled, or not recycled is the right word, but people that are reappointed that currently served. And I would like And I would like to see, or not requesting, I'm just suggesting that more an open process of selection be considered for people that wish to serve the city in that aspect. And I am, and that goes into, you're going to waive any type of term limits, too. I know the city Indian Wells had term limits on some of the commissioners, and they went to great lengths to allow certain members to serve longer. And that's really what this board should do, this council should do, is when people are just deplacant, the people there is, let's keep them on, but let's go ahead and have a public process where everybody knows about it. And I guess that's all I have. I know we have outstanding people that want to serve the city and do currently, but let's go ahead and seek out other qualified candidates, too. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? That was the only speaker.
Thank you. Are there any comments of my colleagues?
I do, Mr. Mayor, if I may. So I'd like to say thank you very much to all of those who have volunteered to serve on our various commissions and boards. It's a volunteer job, and your time is very valuable. We much appreciate it. There are four of you here in the chamber today, and I'd like to mention those of you. Marlene Cassetta is in the chamber, Dennis Constant is here, Guido Portante is here, and Ron Treet is here. So thank you for being here. If I missed anybody, please stand up and let me know. Yes. Oh, Leslie, you're the newest commission member, I think, to be added today. So thank you for standing up and letting us know. Thank you, I appreciate that. Leslie Malloy. Okay, that's all I wanted to say, is thank you very much, and I wanted to point out those commission members who are present here in the chamber today.
And I likewise will echo that again. This is part of the service to the city. Your time is invaluable. We appreciate the dedication. Many of you have served for many years. Dennis, I know you have served for a significant number of years and made great contributions. You personally have inspected the facilities regularly over the years, so thank you very much. And we look forward to the new people participating as well. Are there any other comments? No. I will ask for then a motion to approve the list of nominees.
I'd be happy to make that motion, Mr. Mayor, that the city council ratify the nomination of members to serve on various cities' boards and commissions as presented and waive any applicable term limits.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
And congratulations to all of you who are now commissioners and serving the fine city of Rancho Mirage. Did you want to?
I was just going to let you know we have a request for public comment on closed session.
Okay. Go ahead.
If the city clerk would.
Brad Anderson.
Thank you. Sorry, causing conflict. My name's Brad Anderson again, for the record. Not that it matters. But I wanted to speak on Item 8A, which is the potential litigation or initiation of litigation, if I can read correctly today. I just, maybe the city attorney when he gives his report can possibly confirm that that's the same case that you talked about at the last, most recent city council meeting. It's important, because I noticed on the timestamps at the last minutes, I'm hoping that's correct, that you spoke over an hour on that one incident. And I did write some comments, so hopefully people can look at those. But I'm kind of concerned about the length of time spent on these items, and maybe there's other items. And I know that's an ethical issue, and I don't want to say you're not ethical. Well, I think I have said that before, but I just want to say in this aspect, but if you're eating back there, or if you're, you know, doing some other items, or maybe walking back and forth, I don't know how long it takes to get to your meeting place, maybe that time could be accounted for in the public record, too. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I will now ask the city attorney if he will summarize those items that are going to be covered during the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll be meeting in closed session pursuant to the item before you on the Agenda 8A, Conference with Legal Counsel, Potential Initiation of Litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.9 D41, potential case.
We are now reassessed into closed session. For the record, all members are present and accounted for. City Attorney, would you please review items that were covered in the closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. No reportable action taken today.
Thank you. This meeting is now concluded.